There we are.
Okay, I'm gonna call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 28th, 2020 to order. If you will all rise and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. There's gonna be a lot of chatter in the background. If that keeps up, we might ask you all to mute when you're not speaking. If it gets better on its own, that's wonderful. Next item on the agenda is the roll call. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Filgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman D'Senzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a core is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Tuesday, April 14th, 2020 Committee meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion by D'Senzo, seconded by Proctor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. I was just made aware, not even three minutes ago, of a presentation, but why don't we move that to the end of the agenda and just get to our business? Next item on the agenda is the ordinances table to remain in the committee.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes.
I requested a presentation from Scott Doll from Convention and Visitor Bureau, but it's not on the agenda, so can we put that in at the end also?
I don't mind that at all. Thank you for letting me know.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the ordinances table remaining in committee. Agenda item number 2017-103, 2018-1110, 2019-008, 2019-276, 2019-430, 2020-049, 2020-057, 2020-067, 134, 152, 153, 158, 159. List here this evening. 160, 161, 162, 163, and 164. Does anybody wish to act on any of those ordinances? Going once, going twice? Okay, moving right along. Mr. Clerk, ordinances for committee consideration, CWLP.
2020-166, an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing execution of contract UW20-02-89, Deftile Iron Pipe with Core &amp; Main LP in an amount not to exceed $1,012,777.96 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, Red Path.
Second, McMiniman.
Second, Conley.
Motion for consent, Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderwoman Conley. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance with consent agenda, signified by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
2020-167, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of contract UW21-03-04, Iron Fittings with Core &amp; Main LP, Illinois Meter Incorporated, and Schulte Supply Incorporated in a total amount not to exceed $267,156.31 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, Red Path.
Second, Hanauer, full Genzie.
Motion for consent, Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderman Hanauer. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
2020-168, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing execution of a contract UW21-03-05, Water Main Gate and Tapping Valves with Core &amp; Main LP and Illinois Meter Incorporated for a one-year term in an amount not to exceed $388,718 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, Red Path.
Second, Conley.
Alderman Redpath and Alderwoman Conley. Consent agenda, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of agenda item 2020-168, signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
2020-169, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE20-02-85, Unit 4 Cooling Tower and Assembly Replacement with an XO US LLC in an amount not to exceed $125,540 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, Red Path.
Second.
Motion for the consent agenda made by Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderman Filgenzie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
2020-170, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE20-11-74, Dolman Unit 4 Dust Collector Insulation and Lagging with Brock Industrial Services LLC in an amount not to exceed $59,775 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, Red Path.
Second, full Genzie.
Motion for the consent agenda made by Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderman Filgenzie. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
2020-171, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of the annual software maintenance support for the supervisory control and data acquisition energy management system with Open Systems International Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $61,942 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, Red Path.
Second, full Genzie.
Motion for the consent made by Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderman Filgenzie. Any discussion?
Discussion, Red Path.
Alderman Redpath.
Is Doug Brown on the line?
Mr. Brown?
Anybody from the utility? I'll get it next week.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
2020-172, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Steffel Nicholas and Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $98,000 for financial advisory services for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent, McMiniman.
Motion for the debate agenda.
Debate, so move. Second, Proctor.
Motion is for the debate agenda by Alderman Hanauer, seconded by Alderman Proctor. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Just discussion, this is a.
Since the utility's not on, I'll wait till then.
Alderman Donilon, McMiniman has a discussion.
Alderman McMiniman.
This is a really good initiative by our water division and the utility. They're gonna try to refinance our existing bonds to a lower interest rate to save roughly $100,000 to $200,000 a year, and that's improving the cash flow for the water division. Doug Brown explained that all in a phone call earlier today, and he is preparing some additional information to provide the council.
Wonderful, thank you for that information. Anybody else?
Yes, Chairman, Doug Brown is, he didn't get unmuted in time, so he'll come on now and talk to this, as well as answer any questions.
Mr. Brown.
He's in route, I believe, Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
He's having technical difficulties.
Well, I think Alderman McMiniman did a good job. He answered my question, so anybody, anybody else in the interim? How does the body wish to proceed? Wish to proceed with the debate agenda?
Hey, can you hear me, Alderman?
We can hear you now, go ahead.
Okay, great. The magic of texting. So, in essence, this refunding of the water fund bonds, you know, we're gonna take advantage of the low interest rates out there right now. As long as the market holds, you know, we keep moving forward. But the beauty of this refunding is it would allow us to save approximately, you know, it's estimated, of course, but maybe seven to eight million dollars in debt service. So, it's definitely a boost for the utility than to dedicate those funds to some big projects that we've got looming, some of which we've talked about before. One would be to relocate the water distribution building off of 11th Street, and just because of the 10th Street Railroad Track relocation project, taking more of the water department land that's needed, basically requires that building to be relocated, that those facilities there, so there's really no other way to pay for it. This is a great opportunity, I think, for the utility to, you know, take those savings, essentially, and put it towards that project. We will be looking at any kind of other grants we can get, obtain, to help fund that, and if that's the case, then we can then take, you know, the additional revenue source from the bonds, refunding, and put it towards, you know, main replacements or automated meter readers, you know, to put the new meters in. So, you know, there's, this is just a great opportunity there.
Thank you for that explanation. Anybody have any questions? And Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
I'd like to move this to consent.
Second motion, McMiniman.
Is there a second?
Second, full Genzie.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I think this is a great proposal from the way it's been described, I really appreciate that. We know we're gonna, we're going to need the money and have some major projects that are going to need it, so any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion was for the consent agenda, for agenda item 2020-172. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
Public Works, 2020-173, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 73 Green Castle Circle.
Move to debate.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Hanauer, seconded by Alderwoman D'Senzo for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the debate agenda, signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
Finance, 2020-174, an ordinance authorizing execution of a professional services contract with Maricon LLC to complete actuarial reports for the city's health benefit costs for fiscal year 2021, an attestation for Part D subsidiary for a total amount not to exceed $5,500 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move for debate, Alderman Redpath.
Second.
Motion for the debate made by Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderman Filgenzie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the debate agenda, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, in the description of this one on 2020-175, there's a typo down at the bottom, the very last line where it says ultimate savings, the five should be a dollar sign, should be $2,800, okay?
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Clerk.
That makes a difference.
Yes, thank you. 2020-175, an ordinance authorizing an extension of contract number CS16-28 with Watts Company Systems Incorporated for lease and maintenance of office printer copier machines for a four year period from June 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2024, for a total amount not to exceed $450,000 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move to debate.
Second, full Genzie.
Motion for the debate agenda made by Alderman Hanauer, seconded by Alderman Filgenzie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
2020-176, an ordinance authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Highland Software Incorporated for the use of Highland Cloud and hosting platform on the on-based electronic plan review and document management system in an amount not to exceed $104,420 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second, full Genzie.
Motion for the consent agenda made by Alderman Hanauer, seconded by Alderman Filgenzie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
2020-177, an ordinance, an ordinance authorizing supplemental relocation expenses in an amount of $25,135.11 for the State of Illinois Department of Central Management Services located at 1924 South Ten and a Half Street relating to the Springfield Rail Improvements Projects.
Move for consent.
Second, full Genzie.
Motion for the consent agenda made by Alderman Hanauer, seconded by Alderman Filgenzie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
2020-178, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Sangamon County, Illinois, and a professional services agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated to provide continuation and funding of a minority participation plan from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021 for an amount not to exceed $120,000.
What's your consent?
Second. Second.
Motion for the consent agenda made by Alderwoman Turner, seconded by Alderwoman D'Senzo. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
2020-179, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in an amount of $600,100 for overtime costs in excess of FY20 budget for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for debate, Alderman Redpath.
Second, Hanauer.
Motion for the debate agenda made by Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderman Hanauer. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Alderman Hanauer.
Can we get, this seems awful excessive from past years, and we've had, we've had a lot of people go to the military and whatnot. I kinda like to know, there's gotta be something going on here besides that, and, I mean, this is a lot of money, and I'd like to know what our previous year's overtime overruns, overruns have cost us for overtime. Chairman, the chief is at the podium. Okay.
Chief Rainey.
We gotta get the mic on, please.
Chief, we can't hear you.
Your mic's off.
I don't know how to fix that.
You're on.
It was magic, it fixed itself. To my knowledge, we have not gone over our overtime budget since, I believe it was 2002.
So what's changed?
The, three things changed. First was you hit, you hit the nail on the head with military. Normally, so we've tracked, we've very closely tracked overtime, when I say we, my predecessors have very closely tracked all of our manning since 2016. So, in that time, we've had military is normally about 150 to 160 missed days of work per year. Last year, it was over 400. The other thing that we had last year that was different was we had a lot of injuries, far and above what we normally have in a calendar year. And the third thing was we had a lot of long-term illnesses, far and above what we have in a calendar year. Each one of those things that I just mentioned was about a third of that amount that you see in front of you.
Question, Mr. Chairman, Red Path.
Alderman Redpath.
So, how are you hiring back, chief? Are you, are you just, are you meeting minimum manning? Are you going to a full squad, or can you go to a minimum manning, or how's that work?
We do not go above the 49. It's rare that we go above 49. We will do it for the fair, so that two weeks, we go to 50. There are times where we have instructors and then, of course, our special teams, so there are other things outside of just our, our daily manning, but for the most part, that's minimal. The driver of this number that you see in front of us is us getting to that 49 every day.
My point is, are you going back to regular staffing, or are you, are you staffing at minimum manning to save the overtime cost?
I guess I don't understand the question.
Are you, are, what do you have, three guys on a rig?
Yes.
So, if, what's your minimum manning on a rig? Is it three?
Well, it's three on a rig, but it's 49 per shift.
I get that, but you can't take, if it's minimum manning's three, you can't take it out with two, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, is there more than three at times on the truck?
Rarely, but if we have more than three on an apparatus, we are not into hireback.
Okay, that's my question.
Yeah, there are times, yeah, okay, I think I understand your question now, my apologies. Yes, there are absolutely times where we are overmanned, and on those days, we do not go into overtime because there's no reason to, except for those things that I just mentioned. There are still special teams training and things like that.
Just worried that you're, and I know you're not doing this, but I don't want people creating overtime for.
No.
Okay.
No, it's, I will, I'm happy to break it down before next week, since you put it on the debate agenda. I will send you my analysis, I've sent it to Director McCarty already. Trust me, he's had a lot of questions about it, and it's, yeah, it's, it is, this year was what I hope is an anomaly, but that anomaly is continuing right now. We have a lot of people that are otherwise, have not missed much work in their careers, that have had hand surgeries, back surgeries, just.
And none, and none of this over time has contributed to the Corona situation, it's from the past.
Well, no, none of this, because that was last year's budget. So far, our tracking, I believe, the last time we looked, because we have had people in quarantine, and that did create hireback, I believe, 24,000 this year, 28,000, 28,000. We've spent 32,000 thus far as a department, and 28 of that has been on, due to Corona, by people not being able to be of work.
Thank you.
Chief, just one follow-up question, if I can. You had mentioned this happened last fiscal year. When did you become aware of the problem and the need for the six, the additional 600 of the spending authority?
You know, it was, it was throughout the year, it was just trending up the whole year, and I think we first, over the summer, which is traditionally when our, when our overtime is, is at its peak, just because people are taking vacation and using their benefit time more during that, that would be probably the time where we first started to notice there was a problem. But again, if we were to a point where if, if, if things would have normalized, if people would have been back at work, it would not have been this draconian.
Sure, I guess what I'm getting at is, we have a budget process that began this year in January and February, and we were having significant discussions, especially the night of the, of the budget public hearing, about fund balance and monies that are available or not available, and I didn't hear any discussion from either yourself or the budget director about the need for this additional funding that's over half a million dollars.
Understood.
I mean, anybody want to address why we weren't made aware of it then? I mean, it was just, maybe we could have done something back then, or, just curious.
Mayor Langfelder, what we'll do is, we'll give a, a report on how it's accrued over the course of time, so I'm not sure what dollar amount was accrued in December, January, February, so that'd be helpful. Paint that picture, what you're talking about.
Yeah, I just, I just think, I mean, it probably, obviously wouldn't have changed the outcome, it just would have been good information to have during the budget process, in all fairness.
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion regarding agenda item 2021-79? Yeah, Alderman Hanauer, for the discussion.
So, chief, I guess, here's one of my questions. When someone goes on military leave, you know they're gonna be gone for quite a while, you can't adjust the schedule to where it does not require overtime?
So, we will, and often we do this, is we will readjust the shifts. There's very little difference between, we need 63 to 65 people on a shift, there's very little difference, if you're at 65, your payroll's a little higher, your overtime's a little less, 63, it seems to balance out. So, we will, if we see that we have a shift that is heavy, we will move people, and we try to stay ahead of that throughout the year. So, yes, when we know somebody's going to be deployed for several months, and there's also maybe somebody that's long-term illness, FMLA leave, things like that, we will definitely adjust those shifts, but that takes a little bit of time, too. It, it usually takes us a couple of weeks to get there, just to give the person the right amount of notice that, hey, you're not working, you have to, you're gonna have to adjust your schedule, because that's, it's not really fair to say you're working Friday and then you're coming in on Tuesday and your schedule's completely different. So, we try to work with them and give them that little bit of notice, and I mean, those, those small adjustments aren't, aren't big changes, it's not gonna save one way or the other, but a lot of times, we'll leave them on that shift for several months.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, is there a motion on the table?
There is.
Motion for debate.
Motion for the debate agenda. Who made the motions for the clerks?
Actually, Alderman Redpath made the motion, and then Alderman Hanauer seconded it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the debate agenda for agenda item 2020-181, please signify, excuse me, 179, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
2020-181, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Sinclair Television of Illinois LLC for the 2020 digital marketing campaign from June 1st, 2020 to September 1st, 2020, for an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Holden Committee, McMiniman. This, Mr. Chair, if I may explain.
Alderman McMiniman, please.
We've got.
Alderman, just for clarification, because I couldn't hear, what was your, what was your motion?
To holden committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Red Path. The reason being.
Please.
The, we've got, as everybody knows, we've got empty hotel motel rooms, and until we know where and what amounts monies will come from, and until the tourism industry turns around, we're not in a position to know whether this is something that we're gonna have money for, or what priorities, if we have limited monies for tourism, how we want to spend the limited money, so that's the recommend, that's the reason for the recommendation to hold till we know more.
Any further discussion on holding this in the committee? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
2020-182, an ordinance authorizing execution of professional services agreement with ShopSpotter Incorporated for the use of gunshot detection technology in an amount not to exceed $838,750, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in an amount of $150,000 of unappropriated funds from FY2020 for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion to table, second to motion to table, McMiniman.
Okay, there's a motion to table, motion to table. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Alderwoman Turner.
So, I understand, I understand why Alderman McMiniman made the motion to table, because we're in.
But it was by Alderman Redpath.
I'm sorry?
The motion was by Alderman Redpath.
I understand why there was a motion to table because of the impending financial situation. However, I really would like to hear from Chief Winslow about the, the effectiveness of the ShotSpotter, the way it's been implemented.
Is the chief on the line, or in the room?
He's in the room.
Chief Winslow, if you could please come to the podium? And while he's coming up, you know, I, I would also like to hear, chief, if, if, from a, from a city that has utilized this service, and the pros and the cons, because we've really not ever had that conversation, I think that's important. Chief?
Yes, sir, good evening. First and foremost, when we look at the ShotSpotter technology, we look at it as another step in toward intelligence-led policing. It gives us a true scope of the problem of gun violence in our community. We all know that there is gun violence going unreported in our community. We saw that last year with one of our homicides on the north end, where several people heard the shots, but no one called it in, and then the young man was found the next morning by his mother. Additionally, with that, this will give us better data, better intelligence, and allow us to direct our resources more effectively to address gun violence. Another pro to it is the instant dispatch of it. There's no middleman in between, there's no waiting for somebody to call dispatch, there's no waiting for dispatch to put it out to the calls, to the cars for a call for service. It'll go directly to their in-car computers as well as their mobile devices, so they can instantaneously dispatch themselves to that area. Oftentimes, what we get a lot of, is that people call in a shots fired, and they don't know where it came from. We've seen that multiple times throughout my career, the way sound acoustics bounce, they don't know exactly where it's coming from. This would triangulate that and give us that information within 75 feet of where it occurred from. It also gives us other valuable intelligence to help keep our officers safe, such as the number of shooters, the type of weapons being utilized, whether it's a semi-automatic, whether it's an automatic, whether it's a shotgun, et cetera. It helps give us that information. Once we're on scene, we hope it would lead to greater apprehension, as well as prosecution of suspects. This will be done through greater recovery of evidence, that'll be vital in the investigation. It will also help save lives by aiding the injured, by getting EMS treatment to them quicker. Additionally, it will help us locate witnesses who haven't had time to flee the scene or go in their house, and then they don't want to come back out. go in their house, and then they don't want to come back out. It'll also show that we care for our community. It'll lead to better community relations, based on the fact that so many people will call in a shots fired, but then they don't see an officer, and they don't know what happened, and then they're wondering if we even respond, and when the truth is, we always respond. But now we will have that exact location, where to go, and show that we care, and that we're being proactive about trying to reduce this problem in our community and save lives. We see this as another step in our overall gun violence reduction plan, which includes, you know, several, a couple of years ago, when we increased our street crimes, you know, when we redirected our narcotics unit and proactive crime units to address the gang violence in our communities, to go along with the use of our focused deterrence program and our NIB, as well as the crime cameras that we have in our community already, and that we need to increase. We also see this being a step in the future for LPRs, or license plate readers, where we can tie this all together to reduce crime. As far as other communities that have utilized it, we have, I don't have specific stats with me tonight, but we have talked to communities where they see the value in this, and they've increased their commitment to ShotSpotter, because they've seen the reduction in crime and the apprehension of criminals. Again, I can't say it's going to reduce crime 100%, but what I do can say is that it will be an effective tool to help us combat gun violence, and take suspects and offenders off the streets. Now, whether somebody takes their place, that'll be just another part of the battle that we go through. Several things that I've read recently, and discussions that we've had with some of the departments who have implemented, they're seeing reductions of 20 and 30% in gun violence in yearly, the year after taking this. The city of Chicago and the Inglewood District credited their reduction in that area, and I want to say it was something like 40% in one year, 43% reduction in gun violence in that one district in one year. And I believe they're up to over 100 square miles of ShotSpotter devices in their community now. We're talking about a 4.25 square mile area in our community, where data from the last five years, from confirmed shots fired, shootings, and gun homicides, have directed where those acoustics have been placed within our community. As far as implementation, the system is ready to go live, it's just waiting on this approval here, or the nonapproval here, and it won't go live. But that's where we're at right now. I do, again, see this as another valuable tool in our overall gun violence reduction plan. I think it will help us go forward. While it is a huge cost, I know that the hospitals have donated funding, or committed funding, or pledged funding, to help fund this for the next three years. It is a cost, but you know, if someone asked me today about it, well, what do you think about it? I think it's going to be a great tool. I think it's going to make us one step closer to becoming, you know, more technology savvy, better response rates, leading to higher apprehension of suspects and offenders, as well as, you know, aiding those who may be the victim of a gunshot.
So.
Chief, two questions on, Alderman Turner, I'll wait, go ahead, please.
Okay, so, I have always been supportive of this project, and I understand that we are in an uncertain financial situation, given the coronavirus, and we don't know how long that's going to last, and what the ultimate impact is going to be on our budget. However, I think as a community, we have to balance operations of the city, as it relates to the health and safety of our community. In the, over the past few months, we have seen a significant uptick in gun violence throughout this entire community. It's not just concentrated in one part of the city. I would say that there has been some type of gun violence in every ward throughout the city, even in areas where we have not seen it before. There's a lot of it that everybody on the council has anecdotal information of gun violence that occurs, that is not reported, and, you know, that skews the statistics quite a bit. So, I just, I just really feel like we have to balance saving lives and a response that leads to a higher response rate, which leads to the apprehension and conviction of individuals that are perpetrating violence on our community. I just think that we have to be very prudent about this, and I look at it the same way that we are going to improve $600,000 on additional overtime for firefighters. That's a health and safety issue. And I really see this money going for ShotSpotter as a health and safety issue. And I'm speaking on it as a citywide issue, but most specifically of the fact that it definitely, that this uptick in gun violence has definitely had a substantial and disproportionate impact on my community, and those people that I represent. And so, like I said, I think that we really have to balance the health and safety of our community, and we can't just send everything back to committee. The city has to operate, and we have, we just have to be more prudent in the way that we expend our finances.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I initially, I supported this project, and I think the cost at the time of, what, 300,000 or something like that? It's gone, it's gone up over $500,000. And you're saying it, has it even been implemented? Because, you know, $800,000 could get us, what, eight, 10 police officers? You know? And how many square blocks does this actually cover? Because it doesn't cover the whole city. That's, that's the issue I have. It's, you know, it's gone up in price so much since we initially bought it, what, you know, what, are they going to, are they going to hold our feet to the fire and keep raising the cost? Because we do have some serious concerns coming up, and that's a lot of money.
Chief?
So I can address part of that. It's for 4.25 square miles. If you had to draw roughly a map of it, it would be basically Stevenson Drive on the south side, from basically Butler to Glen Air subdivision, then up Taylor. There's some in and outs out there where it's unincorporated area, and then basically picks up again around Southeast High School, runs north along the Taylor Avenue corridor, north to basically Clear Lake Avenue, and then cuts over Clear Lake Avenue to take in the area around Pillsbury. Comes up to North Grand, it goes over North Grand, basically down to, I believe it's Klein, where the hospitals are at. We included the hospitals, since they've been so generous in donating with us. It'll come back down to Carpenter, cut back over Carpenter, and run down the 11th Street corridor, is what it's looking at approximately. And that's a 4.25 square miles. As far as the cost, this is the three-year cost, not the one-year cost. Part of the increase in the cost was because initially, when we looked at it, we were looking at three square miles, and when we looked at the historical data for the last five years, and the way our community is mobile, and the way, as Alderman Turner said, there's gun violence in every ward. We looked at the areas around, you know, Enos Park, where we needed to include that technology, because the data showed us it needed to be over there. So that's the reason for the increased cost, but as a three-year cost locked in, obviously we had the 150,000 from last year that was appropriated, that was left over in lapse funds, and then, of course, what's in this year's, I believe is 85,000, and then the money that the, that the hospitals have donated. So, again, it's very costly, you know, very costly, we all understand it, but I do think it's a valuable tool. The key here for us, and I'm fearful of this, I'll be honest with you, because this is going to increase crime rates as well. It's going to show us a true picture of the gun violence in our community. Many of the communities we talked to said that they only get 20 to 30% of reported gun crimes. I've been on scenes myself, where I've been in the field, and I've heard 10, 12 shots, and nobody calls it in, the police are calling it in. And we're saying, well, it's to the north and east of me, because we're doing, based off the best of our experience, and our ears and our intelligence of where it's coming from. But again, the way sound travels and it bounces, there's never a true picture until you can pinpoint where it's at. So with this technology, if we get it, we're going to see an increase there, but it's going to give us a true measure of where it's occurring, at least in that area, and accurately in that area, which I think will lead to, like I said, increased response times, or shorter response times, I should say, increased apprehensions and increased prosecution, because the recovery of evidence, the location of witnesses, and all the things we already discussed. But, again, I know it's a tough decision you have to make here, but I think it is a vital part of our overall gun violence reduction plan. When you take the ballistic evidence that can find on these crime scenes by pinpointing it, put it through our knife and ballistics machine, and tying crimes together to give us better intelligence of where that weapon was used in other crimes, and who may have been in possession of that weapon, it's going to help us in the future. So I think, again, it's a valuable tool, but I understand where you guys are coming from.
Thank you, Chief. Before Alderman, Redpath, D'Amico, Turner, and Gregory, who have all asked to be recognized, I do have a follow-up question that fits what you just talked about, Chief. How much have we spent? Just a clarification, how much have we spent to date, and how much have the hospitals actually committed?
We haven't spent a dime yet. Obviously, they've, in good faith, installed the product, I believe, but again, we haven't spent a dime, as far as I'm aware of as of yet.
So it's actually the units or what have you have already been installed?
Could you repeat that, please?
So the units have been installed?
Yes, my understanding that the units have been installed. They're ready to go live, it's just a matter of them coming to, initially, obviously, when we talked about this in the past, we talked about this at the budget hearing this year, we would do a community meeting to kind of educate the community on what we have, obviously COVID postponed that, that was supposed to occur last month. Additionally, we have talked to ShotSpotter, they're willing to send an expert via Zoom next week to do a presentation for you, to answer any Q and A's that you may have about the product, about the, how it works, and maybe the successes they've had throughout other communities.
Okay, and how much of the hospital is dedicated thus far?
50,000 each year.
I believe it's, may I take it?
That'd be 50,000 each year. Memorial Health Services and HSHS St. John's each pledged 50,000 per year. And in answer to Alderman Hanauer's question, the price did not go up. Really, what we did is expand the borders. It's a three-year contract, as opposed to the one year that was presented originally.
So just for clarification, the hospitals have committed 100,000 per year?
Correct.
That changes the numbers dramatically. Okay. Alderwoman D'Amico, and then Redpath, and then Turner.
Um.
Gregory.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am not in support of tabling this. If we want to hold it in committee, you know, for a little while, that's one thing, but tabling it, I'm not in support of that. As someone who represents a community that has been affected by gun violence, I'm tired of telling my constituents, we called it in, I don't know what to tell you. It's just, it's an unacceptable answer, and people are growing, you know, more and more upset by this by the day. So we have to do something about this. And I've called in, I've called him in myself, several times, because I've heard something that didn't sound right. I agree with Alderwoman Turner on this. I don't like the price tag, I don't like, you know, where this is falling, and the timeframe that it's falling in, because we know we're facing some tough decisions. But if we don't have a safe community that people want to live in, then we don't have anything. So this is, this is necessary.
Okay, if I wrote it down correctly, Alderman Redpath is next, then Turner, then Gregory.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good God.
And Alderman Turner, I will withdraw my motion to table this, I will try to put it in committee if we have the votes, but I do, I won't table this. Chief, my whole, my whole problem is, we can't afford this. This is, we're in un, you know, unexplored areas right now with this Corona thing, and it's going to get worse. And for the hospitals to commit $50,000 a year for three years, I was just told today that they're getting ready to lay off a whole bunch of people, I should say, furlough a whole bunch of people. So the bottom line is, is that they're in financial trouble, just like the rest of us. You know, I don't think this technology is, is what it, what it's hyped up to be, and I'm not calling you, I'm not taking a shot at you, but I do know a lot of people in the law enforcement community, too, and they don't, a lot of them don't like this technology. It's the same, whenever we're in a good financial situation, we might try something like this. And you probably remember when Chief John Harris wanted to buy two helicopters, because he said we needed them, and obviously, that's not something we need in Springfield. So this is a, this is a luxury type of situation. It's not going to solve the crime that we think it's going to solve, because you're not going to put a shooter at the scene. You're going to get some witnesses, absolutely, but you're never going to get, you're never going to put somebody at the scene with this technology. So, you know, I, like Alderman Hanauer, I believe that we could add more officers with this kind of money, and I think that's the right way to go, because it's not supporting the whole city. And this is not technology that's going to support the whole city. We all got problems in our ward. And I can tell you right now, I hear every day about not seeing patrol cars out where we are, because our patrol officer from South Grand to Toronto Road, one officer, and I know I got a lot of them that live in my ward, but they're not working, they're going home. Bottom line is, is that we need to think about reorganizing our districts, and trying to make better coverage, because I go from the middle of Alderman Turner's ward all the way to Toronto Road, and those things have to change. And I know that you look at that kind of stuff all the time, and I'm not criticizing you, I'm just giving you some advice and some, and some construction criticism. But bottom line is, is I think it's way too much money, we can't afford it, we're not going to come out of this thing financially for two to three years, and we're not going to be able to afford a lot of things. So this is, this is a luxury, this is not something we need to, we need to push right now. And I will, Mr. Chairman, I will move, withdraw my motion and ask to be, this to be left in committee.
Okay, the motion, the motion is to leave in committee, is there a second for the motion to leave in committee?
Okay.
Motion is seconded by Alderman Hanauer. In further discussion, Alderwoman Turner.
Um, I get, so, let me organize my thoughts for a minute, I got to take a breath. But, so, I understand when people call for more police officers. Putting more police officers on the street is not necessarily an effective way to fight crime in Springfield. And we can't just put more police officers on the street, we have to give police officers the technology that they need in order to be effective. So I could put 50 more police officers out there, but that doesn't mean that they're going to be effective and, and get the result that we get if we use that money to employ effective new technology. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is that, no, this doesn't cover the entire city. And I, and I, I'm grow, I grow frustrated when I hear that, because I vote for things all the time that do not cover Ward Three, Ward, or Ward Two. I vote for things every other week that do not cover the entire city. But my job is not to be concerned about my little part of the world. My job is to be concerned about what is going to be the best balance and the, and most effective to provide, to enrich the health and safety and the lives of the people that live in the Springfield community. So while the ShotSpotter may not cover the entire city of Springfield, the effects of the ShotSpotter will have an impact that will cover the entire city of Springfield. And while you, it may not identify a shooter, a specific shooter at the scene, it will give you tangible evidence that you can then take and identify a shooter, and not only identify the shooter, but to, that would lead to a conviction, to get that shooter off the, off the streets. And I will tell you that when you talk about the area that the ShotSpotter is going to cover, gun violence in the city of Springfield is rolling gun violence. So the people that are committing gun violence and being part of gunplay, where that ShotSpotter is located, those are the same people, they're not just shooting there, they're rolling throughout the city. So when the ShotSpotter identifies them and provides information to get them off the street, that's making every community throughout this entire city safer. So, you know, we, we just have to be very careful when we talk about, we don't want to vote for things because they don't affect the entire city. Everybody does that all the time, but more importantly, with this technology, it does impact the entire city, because it stops, it helps to, it won't stop it entirely, but it will help to curtail that rolling gun violence that we see throughout, throughout this community. And, you know, everybody thinks that we don't have the money for this, and we don't have the money for that, until it affects you personally. You know, there was a, there was a pastor that felt like he's going to continue to have church services, because nobody in his congregation was, was infected with Coronavirus. So he had that church service, and he proved his point, and afterwards, his wife and his daughter both died from the Coronavirus. So, you know, we can be very selfish and say that it doesn't impact us, but I guarantee you, this rolling gun violence impacts the entire city. And I, I just don't think that we need to, you know, put off things that are going to significantly impact the health and safety of our community.
Okay, Alderwoman Turner, anything else?
I'm done, thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Chair Donaldin. I just want to, you know, I do support the ShotSpotter, you know, particularly in my ward, you know, gun violence has been an issue, and it's something that we're trying to bring to a halt, and join in with our, our law enforcement team, and doing all that we can, whether that's with the doorbells, and encouraging residents to get that, or whether the ShotSpotter is all steps to preserve life. And I think there's no amount of money to be spared, especially when I look at $987,000 to go pick up leaves. I think this is just as important as that, if not more important. You know, so I definitely support, you know, passing this, you know, as fast as possible, because we definitely. because we, we definitely have to address this issue.
Okay, Alderman Gregory, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Alderwoman Conley. You're up.
I'm mute. I know. Sorry, we've got kitchen construction going on. I just have two quick questions, Chief. And the first one you might not have at the top of your head, but do you know on average how many reports of shots fired we get in a year?
I don't have that information on top of my head, but it's in the several hundreds on shots fired. But when somebody reports a shot fired, it may not be a shot fired. It may be a backfire, maybe fireworks, it may be a transformer blowing. Plus, you may have multiple calls on the same incident. Confirmed shots fired, I don't have those numbers, but they're usually right around two hundred a year on average for the last five years. Confirmed shots fired, we define a confirmed shots fired as when we arrive on scene, we locate a witness who testifies or gives a statement that it actually occurred. We find maybe broken glass, maybe we find ballistics, different evidence of a, the incident actually occurred, whether or not we have witness testimony or not. So anything that we can use to corroborate that a shot occurred and we track that. Now, a lot of our comparable cities do not do that. We do that because we're trying to get a handle on what is the true scope of what shots fired and what gun violence in our community. Some of our comparables, if there's no victim that wants to testify, then they're done. They collect the cases and they move on. They don't count that. We do count that. Something I think might be useful is that, and I don't have the exact number off my head. Maybe Tom Chee knows it off the top of his head. But when we were putting this map together of the areas and historical data, we were able to cover about, I believe about eighty percent of where the historical data showed again of shootings, confirmed shots fired and homicides. When I say shootings, people shot, actual victims. We were able to cover about eighty percent of that. In a perfect world, yeah, I would like to increase it for further out in the city. But, you know, there are some areas that we weren't able to cover. I'd love to, which would have been Harvard Park and Isles Park would be my first two additions if we were ever to expand based on the data we had last time. But that data may change as you correct it and as you track it over the, I shouldn't say correct it, as you track it over the next few years. But again, it takes in about eighty percent of our historical data where our problems have been. Alderman Turner alluded that, you know, gun violence is mobile, and it is mobile in our community. But the vast majority occurs in the area in that four point two five square miles that we are covering.
Okay, thank you. And then with these locations that are being put up, do you have flexibility through this contract to move them if you find in a year or so that things are shifting? Not add new, but to move the existing?
Correct. So we have talked, and there would be a fee to relocate the geographical boundaries. We do not own the product. It's all leased. So basically, what they would probably do is install new sensors in the areas that you want to expand by. There would be a fee. What that fee would be, I don't have off the top of my head. But we did discuss that. Could it be moved? And they said they would not move them. They would just basically put additional acoustic sensors in the new area and then turn the other ones off is how they would handle that.
So it's like those dish network satellite dishes. Right. Sorry. And then one other question. Have you confirmed with St. John's and Memorial that they are still committed to the financial obligations that they've, they've made to us in the past?
No, not recently. That's something we could definitely do. We could reach out to them. I'm sure we can make those calls tomorrow to try to confirm, but no, I have not.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chief, the first time I heard about this, I don't know if it was this exact company, but the first time I heard about the ShotSpotter concept was really about a decade ago, ten years ago. And I'm just curious, and I believe it was in Boston that was utilizing it at the time. What other cities in Illinois and/or around us that you, are you aware of that utilize this technology?
Okay, so in the state of Illinois, the ones that I'm aware of currently are Peoria, Rockford, and the city of Chicago and Calumet City. Those are the four that I'm aware of in Illinois as of right now. With Chicago and Calumet City being the last couple of years, Rockford last year. Peoria's probably been the longest on about a three, four years, actually about four years probably. And they've expanded their program. They just expanded it by another one square mile this year. They were great in helping us as we were researching this product and talking about the value that they see in it. But those are ones here, I know St. Louis City utilizes it as well. Most of your major cities have went. I believe there's over two hundred cities in the United States that are now using this technology. Again, though, it's not a panacea, so I want to create that. It's got to be part of it, like I said, a bigger gun violence reduction plan, which we have. And we see it as a vital step and a vital tool in that, that plan as we move forward. So again, I know these aren't easy decisions and I, you know, I don't envy any of you. In a perfect world, I know you guys would give it to us without even this debate, but I, I got to argue for the value and, and I do believe it will lead to a greater apprehension. Our military's been using it for years in the military. Now it's been, you know, retooled and utilized in civilian life, and it is making a difference in a lot of communities. So again, you know, there's just another part. I hate being that person who misses a body. We did that a couple of years ago when we missed a body over off of RB two hundred in the Allen Street area there because again, people were calling in numerous locations where the shots were coming from. I hate the fact that a mother had to wake up last year on North Sixteenth Street and walk and find her, her son deceased in the vehicle when she heard the shots several hours earlier. So this would help with those areas. But again, it doesn't cover the entire city, and I get that part of it. But it does cover the vast majority of where our historical gun violence has occurred.
Any other comments or questions for the chief? Alderman, Alderman number five.
Thanks. Yeah, Chief, thank you for bringing this forward. And one of the things I want to point out to everybody is this is a multi-year deal, and this is going to do a lot of good for the city. And yes, because of the coronavirus, there are opportunities that we should pause in certain spending, and we have done that. But this is one of those items where we should not pause. And, and you all, I don't know how you would feel, but I, I wouldn't be able to sleep at night if I knew that these gadgets were on the poles right now waiting to be flipped on and gunshots continue to occur in our neighborhood and then someone else died. Just last year, for the first time, I had to tell my four-year-old, he was four at the time. He asked what those sounds were, and I had to tell him they were fireworks, but they weren't fireworks, they were gunshots. So I just want to implore you that when the, the motion hopefully for the, to send us back to committee fails, I hope that we make a motion for debate to get this going so we can turn these things on next Tuesday.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? You know, obviously, any incident of gun violence in our city is terrible. A lot of the numbers that we've experienced the last few years is something I know we, everybody on this call and in the meeting take very seriously. There's been, I think, a real healthy dialogue this evening. I do appreciate that. Appreciate all of you providing the input. And the clarification on the financial side is very much appreciated. Now, the motion on the table is to keep the ordinance in committee. There is a second. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, why don't we do a roll call? Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Yes.
No.
You didn't talk to Doris first.
Would you like, Mr. Chairman, the votes on yes or no? Just, just a timeout there. Just to clarify, the motion on the table is keep the ordinance in committee. Alderman Redpath voted yes. Alderman Gregory.
So are we, so let me, point of inquiry. So with this, so, so with this, so with this vote, a yes vote means that we're going to leave it in committee, and no vote means that, that we would like to do other action with it?
That is correct.
Okay, so my vote would be no.
Thank you. Alderwoman Turner.
No.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
No.
Alderman Proctor.
No.
Alderwoman D'Senzo.
No.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donlin. Do you want to explain my vote? I would not have supported the table, and at this point, I am going to vote no. Alderman Hanauer.
I'm voting yes. The only reason is because I'm very concerned about what, what's coming up because of COVID.
Mr. Chairman, you have three yeses and seven nos.
Motion to send the ordinance to the committees for the debate agenda.
Motion, Alderman Redpath for the debate agenda, seconded by Alderwoman Turner. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just real briefly, this is McMiniman.
Alderman McMiniman.
Putting aside the question of the value of the technology, I think I agree with those that have raised revenue concerns. This is a three-year project. I agree with those that have said that we're in a one, two, three-year revenue serious situation. And so I think we have to think about what layoffs do to our public safety. And so when someone calls for help at eleven PM and the answer is, I'm sorry, all our squad cars are committed, the fact that we got ShotSpotter out there doesn't help that call for service. And when someone is, is asking for help, we want to be able to provide that help. And so I think the point is that we have very, very serious revenue problems coming down the load, down the road. And a three-year commitment, as, when, as has been pointed out, we don't know where our hospitals are going to be at for their hundred thousand dollars a year. So I know we're going to have a full vote next week, but those were some comments that I thought had to be made. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? The motion is for the debate agenda. All those in favor signify by saying Alderwoman Conley. Just got it in.
Yeah, I just want to say real quick, there are some big storm clouds coming and my internet is going really weirdly. So if somehow I go out, I'm a yes on moving to debate.
Okay. All those in favor of the debate agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing, no? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Twenty twenty, one eighty. An ordinance to increase the number of Class E local licenses by one for Beals Chili Spices Incorporated, doing business as The Chili Parlour located at eight twenty South Ninth Street.
Move to consent.
Hosted by Alderwoman D'Senzo, seconded by Alderman Proctor for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Present.
One present?
Noted. Twenty twenty, one eighty-three. An ordinance authorizing execution of contract with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for fire protection services from July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Move to consent. Second, McMiniman.
Motion by Alderman Hanauer for the consent agenda, seconded by Alderman Proctor. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Okay, that concludes the ordinances before the committee this evening. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council this evening? The unfinished business.
Hold on, the mayor's got something.
Yes, I would like to, we recently have our, authorized our yard waste and leaf bag pickup. I have received quite a bit of concern from some constituents about bags that are not being picked up, whether stick on them that are, you know, over fifty pounds or contaminated, I guess, with, with small sticks and things of that nature in them, and, and we have just left, left them there. I don't know if there is a process to come back and get bags that I identify too heavy or have something in there that they don't want to get. But I, I do think for, for the contract that we, that we sent out that, you know, all of those bags should probably be picked up. I, I'm having trouble understanding how, how, you know, a lady can bring some bags to the front and then our, you know, the guys that are picking them up can't get them, can't get them in the truck.
Yeah, I know Mr. Bottom is on the call.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, please go ahead. Then Alderwoman Turner, her vote being raised.
We don't take the contaminated waste or anything along those lines. So people need to make sure that it's free and clear and only has yard waste in that. It is a bi-weekly rotation, so they have removed everything. They can go ahead and we'll definitely make sure we get it the next go around. And then in regards to, it does have to be under, under that fifty-pound threshold as well whenever they're putting the yard waste out there. They can always drop it off too at, at least recycling if they need to. But it also needs to be free and clear of debris at that location too.
So let me ask you this.
But if there are certain locations where it's happening or that we need to take a look at them, then please let us know. And then if somebody has missed, you can always do the SpringfieldYW at republicservices.com in order for them to pick it back up.
Well, I, I definitely want to live within whatever we agreed to. I just, I just, I just want us to be mindful that if I rake up my leaves today or yesterday and I put them out today, they're going to be wet and they're going to be a little heavier, right? Than, than, you know, what I raked them up. So they may be a little heavier than when I originally drug them, drug them to the front. But I, you know, I don't know what, what the process is for that, you know, but I don't want them to have to go back and, you know, do a job that they done once. But I do think there needs to be some process to, to get those bags. I mean, if we're paying them a million dollars, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. And if you, if you have a location and a problem, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to check it out and let me know the location and we'll take a look at the bags.
All right, thank you.
Alderwoman Turner, do you have a question?
I did. I have a question and a comment. So I, I know that Alderman Gregory raised the issue a couple of weeks ago, maybe two or three weeks ago about the waste haulers not picking up all of the trash that, that's out. And I know that when we did, we did their last contract, part of was included with them getting the raise that they requested was that they would pick up everything that was, that was out. And, and I know that Alderman Gregory raised the issue that that was not happening. And I know that Nate and his staff contacted the waste haulers and admonished them about getting this done, and they said, yes, we were going to do it. But it's still not happening. So I would like to request an ordinance that would codify the verbal agreement that we had with the waste haulers with regard to them picking up all of the trash that's out, that's out there. So, and to also put in a, a fine or penalty, whatever you want to call it, that is the same as what we assess to residents that do not adhere to that, that we have to go out and cite. So if I could have that ready for first reading on Tuesday, that would be great.
We'll work with Corporation Council on that.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Briefly, when, when this issue.
Corporation Council. Sorry, who spoke up? Go ahead.
Yeah, what I was going to say is just briefly that when this issue first came up a couple of weeks ago and we had talked with Public Works, we actually started drafting an ordinance to that effect. So we should be able to have that by Friday.
Okay, that'd be great. And while I have you, this is another, did you get my email about the, the other two ordinances that I requested? For first reading on Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Alderwoman Turner?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Any further unfinished business?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Redpath.
Alderman Redpath.
I was just going to ask the mayor a couple of questions if I might with the Corona stuff. Mayor, could you tell me, are we setting up a group to, of business people to talk about reintroducing, opening businesses up pretty, not pretty soon, but when we get ready to? Are we talking to the business community?
Yeah, as far as the inspectors go, with Chief Reine, they've been out there talking to businesses about compliance. With regards to the governor's order, I think that will come out later this week and will provide clarification at that point. I know Valier, so I think she's either going to present tonight or next week, but that'd be part of it is the outreach effort. And of course, on, you know, through the chamber and those networking. But from my understanding, on the retail side of things, individuals can do the, kind of like the pickup service. There's not going to be, and, you know, you don't go into businesses. It'd be kind of what the restaurants are providing right now. But on the retail side of things, you would order online and then pick up curbside.
That wasn't really my question, Mayor, but thank you for that input. But my question was, are we, are you, as, are you putting together any kind of group of business people in Springfield to get feedback on how they would, this process would take place? I mean, I think that's important that we reach out to, you know, leaders in the industries, the restaurants and the hospitals and, and business to find out how they would do this. Are we talking about that to somebody?
Yeah, that was, part of it was covered in my document I did send to the governor's office. That's where that came from, was information from other individuals throughout their industry. So yes, the answer, short answer to that is yes.
Okay. We, when we, when we pass the Emergency Powers Act, Corporation Council, what is the term of that? Is that, is there, is there a sunset on that or is it just until we say it's over or what, how's that work?
As consistent with the state law, it's in thirty-day increments. So what the, as far as the state is concerned, they've been doing it what I would call kind of in a structured way, but over a period of time where they've done it thirty days and a fourteen-day extension and so on and so on, you see the various extensions. a 14-day extension and so on and so on, you see the various extensions. What the city did, what the mayor did was to adopt a state of emergency, but make it consistent with or in place only so long as the state has declared an emergency.
So we don't have to, we don't have to come back to the city council to reapprove the extensions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
But it automatically, to answer your question, yes, sir, there is a, it should never exceed 30 days, but it is being renewed effectively by tying to what the state's doing. But they both automatically go away at some point when it's not renewed.
To make sure it's clear though, that we are going to abide by the governor's stay-at-home order, the extension with the parameters he will be putting in place, clarifying, I believe, this week. That goes till the end of May. That would include face masks being worn in public when you cannot keep the six-foot social distancing.
So are we working, are we going to do this as a city or we're going to do it in conjunction with the county or region, mayor? How's that going to work?
Well, it all's in conjunction. You know, it's, this whole initiative is a health emergency pandemic. So how it works through the state of Illinois and through the state, doesn't matter what city you're in, is through the Illinois Department of Public Health and then it flows through the county public health departments. The cities have the authority, you know, Corporation Council can weigh in, but with regards to the challenge that's taking place, the cities can make the restrictions, we can go more restrictive, we can't go less restrictive on the governor's orders as far as that goes. But the intent is to adhere, if it gets caught up in court, there's no clarification. We intend to move forward with the stay-at-home order as was presented by the governor.
But there is no clear enforcement policy for us to enforce any of this stuff. This is recommendations from the state and from the city. So what is our enforcement authority, Corporation Council?
Well, we have the authority under the, both the state law through the state's attorney's office, meaning when I say we, I mean collectively when you're using that. If they choose to, there are tickets written and the state's attorney's office can actually prosecute those. Alternatively, we have the ability to issue tickets that become ordinance violations.
So that's what we're, that's what we're issuing if we find people in violation, we're going to issue ordinance violations, correct?
Either that or there could potentially be a state criminal charge.
What would that charge be?
It'd be a misdemeanor for violating a health, public health order.
Okay. Chief, if you'd like to come forward and clarify the operations that were, most people are in compliance. What we tried to do is get that compliance through, you know, verbal compliance. We did put in a, through an emergency order that I made was the going up to $500 ordinance violation and moving in that direction. So if you'd like to clarify anything.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, because I was, I'm not far from Alder Woman Connolly, so I was cutting in and out also. So to answer your first question, Alderman Redpath, yes, we have been in contact with many people in the business community. The last I checked, I think we had, we had met with over 30. And Amy Beatle and Valiezel have both provided us with a, with a bunch of information. Many business owners have already submitted some type of a plan, and most of them, I'll be honest, most of them are very reasonable, but some of them we have to say no because it does violate the state's order. But I think once that order is relaxed or it actually becomes our decision, their plans seem very reasonable. And they're usually in two or three phases. And so, you know, obviously there's things, there may be things that we haven't thought of yet, a particular business. I'm not going to act like we've thought of everything because that's, that's very difficult. But the ones we've reached out to have been cooperative and the ones who have submitted ideas to us, even if they weren't, you know, quote unquote, legal at this time, have been very reasonable plans that we think once those restrictions are relaxed, we will be able to say yes, implement that plan.
And is that what you've submitted to the governor's office, mayor?
Part of those are, correct.
And that is correct. I should have mentioned that, that what the mayor, the mayor's letter to the governor's office outlined exactly what we were wanting to do anyway, and it also outlined a lot of those ideas that we had just to give that, you know, once, just to keep pushing for that local control.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Redpath?
Yes, I have one other question if I could.
Please.
Can Chief Winslow ask, answer the enforcement part?
Go ahead.
Just how you go about how officers are doing that.
Go ahead, chief.
So when we're talking about business and business enforcement, what we do the first time around is we go out, we issue what we call a notice to comply and a copy of the executive order, or there's a link into the notice to comply where they can go to the order themselves. And basically, we make them aware of it and we educate them on why they're considered non-essential versus essential. Additionally, we refer them to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity where they can appeal their case about, or their ruling where they've been ruled non-essential. We do not, we do not make those decisions. That comes strictly from them. Again, as, you know, Chief Ryan said, there's a lot of businesses that, they come up with some good plans. They've been creative in trying to think outside the box and maintain social distancing and they've taken some things into consideration and some have some very good plans, but with that, it's still a non-essential business. So if somebody doesn't comply, we always check back within 72 hours to see if they are in compliance. The vast majority have been. If they're not in compliance, we'll issue a cease and desist order. And when we first started this process, that order was issued by the public health department. That has now changed where the police department is doing it. Since we've taken it over about a week and a half ago, we've issued one cease and desist order. If they were to violate the cease and desist order at that point in time, or I should say, at the time we want to issue the cease and desist order, we would issue a ordinance violation depending on what it was for, what the violation was. A lot of times we're just writing it as obstructing a PO because we've been giving you an order to stop. There's also some under the ESDA ordinance that where we could issue them that way. So we've looked at different things on that. With that said, the vast majority are just trying to do the right thing. We haven't had any additional cease and desist orders. We do check back 72 hours after that cease and desist again to see if they're in violation. The plan is that if we go out there again and they are in violation and when we recheck it, at that point in time, there would be issued an ordinance violation and then we would write up a public health report, a public health hazard report and forward to the state's attorney's office and public health for a criminal prosecution.
Okay, thanks. Have you written any citations yet?
As of right now, last week when I checked, I haven't checked since like last Thursday, but as of last Thursday, we had not written any citations. Again, we've taken the education approach to this, you know, the governor laid that out as well. And the fact is that we know people are hurting and the vast majority are trying to do the right thing.
Right.
Take your chief, move to Redpath.
Mayor, I have one more question for you if I could.
Sure. Up to the chair. You want to cut him off, chair?
He already told me I could say it.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Mayor, so we've got people that are working from home under city government and I know that the hospitals are getting ready to furlough a whole bunch of people. Are we, are we planning on furloughing anyone or are we planning on laying anybody off? Do you have a plan put together yet?
Well, we're going to ask for voluntary furlough first. We want to see what the sales tax revenue that comes in in June and go from that approach moving forward. On Monday, after the revised stay-at-home order is in place, we've asked directors to take a look at operations and if people can maintain a six-foot social distance and there's work to be done, we asked that they take a look at that and bringing them back. And of course, we have to have the masks in place, things of that nature, so we're working at that process. And then people have asked, well, is that essential services? Just so everybody understands, when the governor had issued the stay-at-home order, we were, prior to that, we were at essential service strategy. And then when he did the stay-at-home, we went to like a critical strategy. So we went below that. But we're going back to the essential service side because there's a lot of work to be done in various areas just because of the change of seasons. And so that's what the, each department was asked to take a look at and moving in that direction. But as far as the budget goes, we are taking a look at, everything's on the table. So in answer to your questions, furloughs will be looked at, layoffs would be looked at, everything would be looked at. I think where we can make end roads is with regards to how we change government. I think we need to take a look at how we're changing our services. You know, with regards to departmental lines, some services cross over, so we really need to continue our shared service model that we started under this administration with the support of the city council, which we appreciate, and that's what needs to continue happening because you don't want duplication of services right now. It's just not government. What the coronavirus has taught all of us, and I appreciate the council members' support of the ShotSpotter, is the future is being thrust upon us as we speak. The other ordinance, Public Works put forward was technology, looking at plans online. We're going to more technology-based system in the future. And so we appreciate the support of those initiatives because that will make us more effective, more efficient. But business is going to go through this. We have to reshape how we deliver those services as best as possible with the minimum amount of resources that we have.
One final question and I'll yield the floor. Is all your executives working? I know that the chiefs are working, I know Corporation Council's working, Nate's working. Are all your executives here at work or are they at home?
Well, all executives are on 24/7, so.
No, that ain't what I asked you.
Yeah, so as far as are they here eight hours a day, 10 hours a day? I don't check up on them with regards to that. What I do check up on is to make sure that they do get the work done. I could speak to the library. I know there's a situation there where she's not able to come in, but, you know, each director's expected to get their tasks done within their department with the current situation that we're working in. And we have daily conference calls, everybody reports in and talks about the items that are being transacted.
I'd appreciate it if you'd look into that because there's people that are pretty upset knowing that are, people that are making a lot, a lot, a lot of money are sitting at home. So please look into that, please.
And they can work remotely, you know, all of them can work remotely. That's the other side of things, you know, so it's not like.
But are they?
Pardon me?
But are they?
Yes. Some are working remotely, you know, last committee's a home. I was working remotely and believe me, I was on the phone.
I'm not talking about you, mayor, I know you work 24/7.
Oh, I know. Yeah, but this is, this is reality that we're dealing with. So I think each director, when they give up and come up and give a presentation, I think they will prove their salt.
They better because it's going to get thin around here pretty quick.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's what we'll take a look at. Like I said, we're going to look at the entire operations of the city. How do we operate into the future that's been thrust upon us exponentially?
Anything else, Alderman Redpath?
Well, no.
Okay, just a follow-up, mayor, real quick, since we were just talking about it, I just want a clarification on what's, what's happening Monday? Are the directors reporting back to you and letting you know who they recommend come back physically into the city hall? And then, I mean, or is, are people actually coming back presently at city hall on a daily basis?
It'd be both. City hall will not be open to the public, but with regards to, we had a contingency plan that we put in place, each department had put in place, and so it's almost taking it in reverse order. And how do you bring people back in? And of course, you know, with that is with regards to the social distancing. And it's just not to the end of May. I mean, this is what we're planning for is the whole year and probably next year, and we don't know where this is going to end, so that's going to be the process we need to put forward with the departments. One thing that I brought up today on the conference call that we had was this proves the reason why we're trying to push the initiative to have all departments with customer contact on the first floor. So you limit, you know, people interacting within the whole building. So I think that's what the virus has done. It really has shown us the challenges that we have each and every day and how do we need to take a look at how we're providing those services in the social distance world.
Alder Woman DeSenzo.
Yes, thank you, Chair. My question is along the same lines. Yesterday, we had five new positives in Sangamon County. Today, we have 41 new positives in Sangamon County. That is an exponential jump. And it's my understanding, it came to my attention today, that people were being told to report back to work on Monday. Alderman Redpath, to your concern, the average person working from home is working an extra three hours a day. I know I was on the phone last night personally till 11 o'clock last night. That is not my normal workday, nor do I want it to be. I sent my first email this morning at 5:30 a.m. Alder Woman Turner wasn't out of bed till four hours later. I should, but that's the truth. So, you know, if people can work remotely, they should be working remotely. I feel very strongly about that. I know it's what the governor has preached. We're trying to keep people safe. As you can see, most of us here are working remotely. I'm going to get off this, this meeting and go back to work at the other end of the table. So I just think this is something we need to take very seriously and if people are being ordered back to work on Monday as we have been told, then I would like to know that. And if they're not, then, then they're not. I have confidence, I mean, I've, you know, communicated with Director Bottom over the weekend, you know, I have all the confidence in the world that our directors are working from home.
Director Bottom's been in most of the time. I've talked to him about that, but in answer to your question, there will be some people coming into work that might not have. That's what we rely on the directors for is what work needs to be done. And so that's what, you know, we talked about the financial pileup, the work pileup is exponential as well. So work has to be done. And so if we can do it in a safe manner, the individuals will be brought back. Director Bottom has done a great job as well as others and working through this whole process and will continue to do that.
Okay, so are people being asked to return to work?
Some will be, I'm sure. It just depends on what the activities of the director would deem essential at that point in time. But there will be processes put in place with regards to the masks. You have to do that, the social distancing, all that has to still be worked through this week. But it's not going to be, everybody comes back to work. You know, it's a phased approach. So if work needs to be done, then they would be brought back as needed. Or they'd work remotely, you know, that's up to the director to determine.
Anything else, Alder Woman?
No, I would just like to say my work isn't piling up because I'm putting in 14 to 16-hour days. So I'm a little confused about this, working remotely but not really working because I can tell you, working remotely is, it's non-stop. I know Alder Woman Connolly is doing it. It's, it's a lot more work actually, being in the office, so.
Oh, no doubt. If you can work remotely, we do have employees that cannot work remotely just due to the tests.
Correct, as does everyone.
Okay, all good questions. I believe it was Alder Woman Turner, then Alder Woman Connolly. Alder Woman?
So I'm still kind of confused. Do you have any idea about what employees, what would be, what employees are going to be coming back in on Monday? I mean, what were their, their job titles or, or job locations, that kind of thing? So do you have any idea about that? That's one question. The second question is, I really, I really want to reemphasize what Alder Woman DeSenzo said about people working remotely from home. People, I have several family members who are working from home and each one of them tells me, I will be glad when we go back to work because I'm working more at home than I am when I'm in my office. That's what everyone is telling me. You know, the other part about that is Alderman Redpath, people who are in their office don't work eight hours a day. So, you know, it is, it is what it is.
I do.
So, yeah, so, yeah, right. So the other question I have is, has there been a deep clean of all of the municipal facilities before we actually ask people, or before we mandate people to go back to work? Has, has that happened or is there a schedule by which that would happen? So the two questions are the, the employees that will be going back to work on Monday and if there has been a deep clean of the municipal facilities before we mandate them to go back. And if that has not happened, is there a schedule by which it will happen?
Yeah, part of that process is two things. One is assessing the work stations, you know, to spread a desk out or put up dividers, put up Plexiglas. So there's an assessment of the work area and part of that, of course, would be doing cleaning of that. And so that is, does that answer both your questions or what was the other one?
So, so there wasn't, so there wasn't, and we're not going to do like a deep clean of all the facilities, just if somebody's coming back in, we're just going to clean their area? Is that, I'm still kind of confused.
I would have to check with, I'll have to check with Nate Bottom on that one with Ron Drennan as far as every area. I know it hasn't happened as of yet. Some areas have been, some areas probably have not. So that's what, we'd rely on them to provide that schedule.
Yeah, I think that that's one of the, I think that that would be a huge concern of anyone or for people going back. of anyone or for people going back in, back to work is that, you know, there was a deep clean of all of the municipal facilities. And I would still like to have some idea of who is actually going to be going in to work on Monday. I mean, I don't need names, I just, just the type, type of workers that are going to be going back into their offices on Monday.
Yeah, the departments can give that report.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. I believe Alderwoman Turner, are you, are you finished?
I am. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Alderman. And Mayor, I, just one quick question because Alderwoman Turner got my other one. As a mom, I'm always worried about cleaning. But what are your plans for face coverings for employees as they come back? Is that something that the city is budgeted for and it's going to be providing for employees? And if so, what kind of face coverings? If we're not providing them, what kind are you requiring? And if we're providing them, what are we offering?
Yeah, we do have some N95s or KN95s. Those would be, for office workers, we've ordered the hospital-type mask. So, we've ordered probably 5,000 of those or 6,000. And then, the other ones, and then the other ones, we do have, I think, over 1,000. But those would be, those would be used at a more stringent method just because of the value of those and the scarcity of them. And so, it'd be individuals that come in close contact. Chief Reine could really speak to that, or Chief Winslow's here, so he could. But with regards to the individuals, we'd provide them those masks when they do come into work. If individuals do have their own, you know, face covering or mask, they can bring that as well.
Okay. And do we have hand sanitizing stations set up already? I haven't been into the buildings for a while, so.
Yeah, we do have some hand sanitizer stations on the elevators when you come in. With the individual departments, we'd have to check. The one thing, going back to what Alderwoman Turner said, what we are doing is cleaning apparatus, the departments that are in now, they're cleaning their areas. But that's the challenge is having the Clorox wipes or having the sanitizer. And that's where really the scarcity is the challenge in making that happen. But Chief Winslow can speak from the police department standpoint if you would touch on the masks and things of that nature.
So, I've been in contact with all the directors. We've all been on the same call every morning with the conference calls and then talked amongst ourselves about, you know, steps that need to be taken for appropriate PPE and cleaning. I can tell you, in Municipal Center East, Ron Drennan's people have done a much better job than they have in the past. I know there's been an emphasis on cleaning. They got some young man that comes in every morning, does a tremendous job wiping down door handles, elevator buttons, drink fountains, et cetera, things that normally didn't get done. And so, I know they've really stepped up what they're trying to do out there. As far as face mask, the PD and the fire, we're all good as far as our N95s as well as our surgical mask. And what the mayor was referring to for our office workers, what we did three weeks ago is we issued all of our office workers surgical masks. Unfortunately, we're the, probably us and the fire, probably the two departments where no one's working remotely. Everybody's in. We've taken steps to make sure that we are abiding by social distancing to include splitting our shifts up, you know, before all of our detectives work day shift. Now, I got detectives who are working afternoons. Same thing with our records department. We couldn't get that six feet in our records department. So, what we did is we split the shifts up. And then, we have some cleaning that goes on in between the shifts for our detective bureau, et cetera. So, there are steps that you gotta do. You just gotta look outside the box a little bit. The key is how do we do this and do it safely? And that's the conversations I've had with a lot of directors when they've called and asked. As far as, you know, CDC recommendations and our hospital professionals, they've all told us the same thing, that the surgical mask can be worn three to five days until it's soiled, and then you give them a new one. So, what we do is we have an inventory control system in place where basically people are given a month's worth of mask upfront. Our officers have N95s and surgical masks where they can wear the surgical mask over the more valuable N95 to keep it from becoming contaminated. The N95 can be worn to 30 days or until visibly soiled or it becomes soaked, et cetera, or you're in close proximity of somebody who you believe to have COVID-19. So, you know, again, we look at the burn ratio. Right now, we're good. And that's the kind of the information that we are sharing with our other directors is how you can do that. At our department, every, every individual employee has to clean their own workstations daily. So, your phone, your desk, your computer, your keypad, your keyboard, et cetera. And I see the same thing happening in the other departments. And I don't want to speak for, you know, Doug or Nate, but obviously, they're taking those same considerations and same points into consideration to make sure we do it, you know? The key is, in our department, is also, we're in a shared building. So, we talked this morning about limiting access to different floors. If there's not a need for somebody to go down to the first-floor break room and they can use the fourth-floor break room, do that. So, those kind of things that we normally do, I think we're going to be pretty well prepared. And I understand that the mayor nor anybody here at City Council wants anybody to get sick. We all want to be healthy. And I'm sure we'll have the appropriate steps in place as we move forward.
Thank you, Chief. And I guess I should probably clarify.
Echoing.
Okay, that's not just me. I'm done.
Any further, any unfinished business?
One line, last item, Chief Reine did send me a text. He said that of the, I think there's 41 cases reported today. 37 of those were from the Villas and Sherman, which is tragic. I mean, they're trying to figure out what to do. The county public health is trying to figure out, you know, what can be done at this point. It's just, yeah, it's not good.
Alderman Conley, drag in.
Regarding the Villas, it's on both the east and west side of the chairs.
Alderwoman Conley. Alderman--
Thank you. Yes, I was checking to see what--
This is what technology does to you.
Alderman McMinimum, I believe. You have some unfinished business?
Just to add to what Mayor Langfelder said, that we got a, you know, extraordinarily serious situation at the Villas, and it's on both the east side, which is the skilled care nursing, and now it's also on the west side of Peoria Road, which is the assisted living and the more independent living over there. So, it's, it's really spread and it's, it's hard to contain at this point.
Yeah, terrible situation. Okay, Alderman, Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Just to be clear, I used to work in the assisted living nursing home industry, and these aren't just, everyone likes to think that these are just the residents that are, that are affected and infected. And that's not, that's not the truth. There are workers that are also infected, and they're going home or going shopping or going, you know, going for walks or whatever. So, we could say, oh, it's just 37. Well, it got across the street somehow. A resident didn't walk across the street. It's a shared employee that, that is probably infecting someone else. So, this is how this virus moves, and this is how quickly it moves.
No doubt about it.
So, I just read that the Sherman Casey's had to shut down today because one of their employees tested positive. So, I mean, we can say it's all at the Villas and Sherman, but it's not all the Villas and Sherman. Not everyone, not every employee lives at the Villas and Sherman. They all go home.
Scary times. Alderwoman Conley, let's give it one more shot.
Okay. Well, without the echoes that I had, Alderwoman DeSenzo just said exactly my point. I mean, we're seeing this all over the state. These, yes, the nursing homes can be hotspots because those residents are vulnerable population, and they're going to exhibit symptoms fairly quickly. But the bigger concern, and Mayor, this goes back to, you know, having more employees back in the municipal building, the bigger concern are the people who maybe are asymptomatic or whose symptoms are mild enough that they feel like they can continue to function. And I know lots of people who are like that. There are people who think it's, you know, slightly elevated temperature. I'm feeling all right. I got a little cough. Maybe it's allergies because they're similar, they exhibit in a very similar way. So, I would just urge caution to the, really, what we're talking about is we have our own little hotspot right in our community. And as Alderwoman DeSenzo so aptly put it again, "Without the echoes of God," I think. Those people are shopping. The employees of those, of those, at that facility, they go shopping in our community. They live here. They have friends. I mean, it, it doesn't take much for someone to break the social distancing, and then we've got this virus building steam again. So, I know everyone's getting antsy. I mean, literally, some of the earlier noise was the, again, my kitchen being remodeled. I mean, it's, we're tearing things up because people are antsy in my house. But we, we, I would, I would urge caution, especially with, you know, if we have people who can work at home, and I promise you, as, as a non-director level person, I mean, I'm one of your state peons, I'm very busy working at home. And grateful to be able to do that. And I think as much as we can, we need to be protecting our city employees, so. And I know, Mayor, that you will be. I'm not, I'm not insinuating otherwise. I just would like to just add another vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any new business? Any new, new business to come before the council?
Oh, yes. Is Nate Bottom still on? We do have a branch pickup starting, I'll read it real quick if that's right. It's starting May 4th. And let's see. So, spring branch pickup begins May 4th, Monday. The pickup schedule's preset, and this is, again, Public Works crews or crews will work through specified areas of the city, and they'll make one pass through each neighborhood. So, residents are encouraged to have their branches out by 7:00 a.m. on Monday during their week of the pickup. And then, the first week is the northwest quadrant, which is the area north of South Grand Avenue and Old Jacksonville Road and west of Wall Street, Walnut Street, sorry, and J. David Jones Parkway, so out by the airport there. And then, the second week will be the southwest quadrant, which is the area south of South Grand Avenue and Old Jacksonville Road and west of Walnut Street. And then, the third week would be, May 18th, would be the southeast quadrant, which is the areas of South Grand, south of South Grand and east of Walnut Street, including the properties around the lake. And then, the final week is week, May 24th or 25th, northeast quadrant, the area north of South Grand Avenue and east of Walnut and J. David Jones Parkway. So, the map is on the city's website at Springfield dot IL dot US. You can click on the residents tab and then navigate to where it says branch pickup, and it's the first button. And then, residents are encouraged to check the website to determine the week of the branch collection. And then, also, we'll have information as far as the size of the pile, things of that nature.
Thank you, Mayor, for that update. You know, I have one, I have one item I want to bring up as well. Years ago, when I was much younger, a firefighter made a recommendation that's kind of stuck in my head that when you go to change your clock, whether it's forward or backwards depending on the time of the year, that it's the appropriate time to change the battery in your smoke detectors. And I don't know who it is on this call, but somebody is guilty of not changing their battery in their smoke detector because we've been listening to it for about an hour and a half. So, whoever that is, if you could, you could take that, make those efforts and see if you can get that resolved. Any other new business to come before the committee? Alderwoman Conley?
And just really quickly, thank you, Alderman Donlin. I just want to mention the labor workers memorial had to be canceled. It was, they had a ceremony planned for today, and they have asked that people turn their lights on in recognition of the fallen workers who, who really provide so many frontline services for us and infrastructure. And so, I just wanted to recognize them and, and thank them for, thank all of our labor workers and all of our frontline, our frontline workers who keep us safe and keep our, our world as ordered as it can be. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point. I can't thank our first responders, the grocery store and retail workers that are indeed showing up every day, and as well as, of course, the medical community for all they've done during this crisis that we've been experiencing. Any other new business to come before the council? Okay, hearing none, we're going to go back to the, I believe that Directors Val Yezel and Scott Dahl each have a presentation. They've assured me that they will be very concise as we've been going from now, we started at 5:30, it's now 7:15. Be very concise so that we can keep moving along. So, Director Yezel, do you want to go first?
Well, Alderman Donlin, I can tell you right now, being concise with everything that we, you know, if it would make more sense to have this presentation next week, I'm willing to hold on to that because it is a lengthy presentation of everything that I'm doing. So, if time is of an essence, I would suggest we wait till next week. Your choice.
I personally am not going anywhere, I can assure you. It's the will of the body. I'm certainly, I'm certainly comfortable with listening to the presentation.
Okay. All right. If we, okay, if Darlene, you could pull up the title page for the presentation, please. Darling's going to help me out here. Well, anyway, I'll just start. So, good evening to the council members. I appreciate your time this evening to hear about OPEC's response to the COVID-19 crisis. As we move through the timeline that I've created, I made a few notes on some of the challenges we have faced and some of the opportunities as we see them. This presentation is about the ways in which OPEC has moved to assist our community. Have we got it up yet?
No.
Well, just go ahead. We can't see it anyway.
There it goes.
Yeah. Oh, you can't see it? Well, what the heck did I go to all that trouble for?
Oh, there it is.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, okay. There. Thank you, Darlene. Could you, there you go. Great. Fantastic. Thank you. Around the end of February and into the first part of March, the leaders, whose job it is to advocate and support for small businesses in our community, began discussing what we were observing in other parts of the United States dealing with the pandemic. At that time, we decided that we should align and all grit together and hold regular scheduled calls to keep the lines of communication open and to brainstorm ways to deal with what we saw coming. On March 13th, I began just by placing calls to 14 of our local and national banking institutions within Springfield to talk to them to see what kind of plans they might have in place to support our local businesses. I will say that the larger national banks at that particular time, because they were across the United States, were just slightly ahead of some of our local banks, but the rest of them really had to get up to speed quite quickly. A few days later, we had our first call with Innovate Springfield, DSI, the Small Business Development Center, SSGA, Local First, MacArthur Boulevard Association, SCV, SCVB, the Chamber and a representative of a national banking firm. Through the weeks, we have invited other individuals to join us, and I invited our DCEO rep who keeps us up to date on all the happenings at the state level. This group agreed to share information with one another and to utilize consistent messaging. The members plan to continue supporting one another into the recovery process by bringing more experts onto our calls, and we've all agreed to work collaboratively for our city citizens. At that time, Julia also began building the city's COVID-19 page, and I provided all business resources for the OPEC page for our businesses. We knew our first challenge was how to get the word out, and as a group, we also saw the opportunity to explore new ways of communicating with Zoom meetings, Facebook Live, et cetera. OPEC staff began reviewing ways we might utilize our current CDBG funds to assist the needs of Springfield. With challenges coming from all directions, OPEC and the Complete Count Committee for the 2020 census knew we had to adjust our approach to the census. Getting the word out is critical at this time. Council members, I also need your help to ensure everyone is counted. If you have an event in your ward, if you could let us know so we can provide information, our materials to educate your constituents on the importance of responding to the census, we would greatly appreciate it. We do understand that everyone's concerned about the COVID-19 pandemic right now, but when we think about recovery, we need to ensure we'll be getting the funding in the future to cover all of our citizens. So, we have to remember that this number of people that we get counted, our count will influence and impact our, the next 10 years of funding. Please forward to the next slide. The week of March 16th, I began reaching out to some of the businesses. I actually lost count at some point along the way, but I would guess I reached probably a little over 100 business owners. I sent emails out to those whom I had relationships with, and I placed calls to those that I did not know very well. In our community, the Chamber reports roughly 1,500 members, and Express Personnel reports roughly 6,000 businesses. So, this is not a new challenge, but something I ran into when I first arrived in the office. We have business names, but not-- We have business names, but not email addresses or contact information. As you can see by the numbers publicized by others, the time and life of information has limited our ability in OPEC to reach all members of our business community. Staff has reviewed other communities, and we have a business registration program, and we see an opportunity to implement something like that when the time is right. The stay-at-home order was issued from the governor that week. I received a flurry of calls requesting clarity about essential and non-essential business guidelines. The immediate challenge was understanding the nuances of the order and the gray areas not addressed, because everyone was asking, I think I should be essential, so why am I not essential? I had already established a working relationship with our DCEO Regional Economic Development rep, working with her on grant opportunities, but I saw an additional opportunity to establish an even deeper working relationship with DCEO, as she was able to quickly get me answers to questions that might have otherwise taken a significant amount of time. We asked staff to collect data on businesses. Our continuing challenge is there's not enough coordination or tools to access the data we need. A few of the opportunities presented themselves to us as several vendors reached out to show us how they can help with important data to track business information. Could you forward to the next slide, please? This is just an example of one, I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying, this is the kind of information that we need, this is a sample tool for data collection. Using GPS data, this snapshot shows the impact on restaurants from the first of the year until April 10th. At the time of the stay-at-home order, we can see that visits to restaurants fell by over 50%. Assuming customer visits as a proxy for sales activity, we would expect to see a decrease in sales tax revenue. This could give us an indication of revenue for the future. This tool contains a sample set of over 2,600 geofenced businesses across 100-plus business categories in the city of Springfield for the years 2019 and 2020. Please forward to the next slide. In the week of March 23rd and the 30th, we continued receiving calls questioning the essential, non-essential business interpretation. We had questions, arguments, and businesses reporting on one another, but thankfully, I had two experts on call, Chief Reiney and Chief Winslow. These weeks were about conference calls and Zoom meetings, along with the other previously established calls, as more and more information came pouring in. Staff began placing calls to HUD, seeking guidance on rumors we kept hearing about potential changes to guidelines on our current funding. It was now abundantly clear that I could no longer be both inward and outward facing, so Abby stepped in to run about 80% of the internal management of staff, including training staff on technology and communication reporting tools. All of my attention had to be on communication to our businesses through the website, calls, and emails. It was evident that our greatest challenge would be working in a completely new way with staff and providing new ways to assist our community members. However, an opportunity became just as evident that this is exactly the right time to make strategic changes in operations and staffing assignments. We received notice of the CDBG funding allocations through the CARES Act from a press release sent late Monday, March 30th. And as I reported last week, this began the arduous journey for guidance from HUD on the new funding. Next slide, please. The week of the 6th and the 13th, this is when all things started flowing together. Listed on some of the calls I made to entities that I have regular communication with, but hadn't had time to call or follow up with, and I knew these people needed some sort of communication from the city. This is not a list of all, but a list of some that I could even remember. So we talked to the Landlord Association, the Black Chamber of Commerce, the Abraham Lincoln Airport, Lisk, the Treasury Affairs Office, White Oaks Mall Manager, Lincoln Lane Community College Workforce, Shields, Capital Area Career Center, United Way, and WorkNet. This week also began my daily research for updates to programming and keeping up on new activities. Prior to this, the information was steady, but now the programs were being announced rapid fire. Refreshingly, I've been receiving an uptick in calls from developers looking to come to Springfield. That's been the joy of my last few weeks, for sure. I continue to follow up with businesses that are in development. Some of these are announced to the public, and some of them are still in exploration, but that's still part of the job, that I need to make sure that we've got businesses that are ready when everything calms down to go. Staff is tracking business closings and changes in business operations using Springfield Zoom that was created by Mark Roberts on GoWeb1. That's on our website, and it gives all businesses an opportunity to self-report if they're operational, if they have curbside pickup, or if they're closed. So it's one stop for everyone to take a look. Internally, we began tracking efficiency of our systems, and at mid-April, the grant writer began, and will already be submitting an application draft this week for the mayor's review, and she has several others in the queue to propose to the mayor. Next slide, please. Week of April the 20th, the staff began reviewing all steps in staying in compliance with HUD. Our consultants helped create the substantial amendment for the additional CDBG funding for review and feedback. The governor announced the extended stay-at-home order with some changes to business operations, which resulted in another call, another day of calls for additional clarity. Thursday, the 23rd, a Zoom meeting and Facebook Live event was held with our CEDC commissioners and the public to discuss the substantial agreement. An additional time will be announced for public comment and the ability to send in feedback. Some of the proposed amendments include funding for the food bank, funding for forgivable loans to small businesses in order to stay in operation, assisted businesses must meet low-income national objectives, funding for income-eligible residents economically impacted by the COVID outbreak to make rental payments payable to the landlords. And this will be run by an entity that already does rental assistance, but must not be a duplication of assistance. We've proposed funding to support distribution of COVID-19 respiratory kits. A portion of the kits will be made available to the general public, the remaining portion will be distributed for at-risk populations, and the funding for portable showers in changing areas for the homeless. Of course, all of that with 1,100 views on our Facebook Live event. This past Friday, I received another flurry of calls requesting assistance and consideration of the CDBG funding. Next slide. Yesterday afternoon, I ran across a blog that spoke to the five best practices for economic development organizations responding to the COVID-19 pandemic, and I'm pleased to report we are doing all of these. They talk about being a centralized expert source for important communications, convening key partners and stakeholders to develop a cohesive message, considering vulnerable and unique aspects of the business community, maintaining close contact with state and local government, and engaging employees to find trends and best practices. I thank you for your attention, and after all this, there really are two words that would sum up OPEC's response to COVID-19, and those words would be customer service. There's one constant theme in all the calls, and I can't even begin to tell you how many calls I've taken over the last month, and emails I've handled. People want someone to listen and to hear them. Many times, I don't even have an answer, but I have yet to have anyone who isn't grateful to have someone who will listen. Next slide. There any questions? I tried to get through that quickly, Alder McDonlon, I hope that was sufficient.
You did fine, and we really appreciate the update. Any alderwoman, alderwoman or alderman have any questions of the director? Any questions of the director? Okay, Director, thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Director Doll?
Chair Donlon, thank you, and I appreciate Alderman Redpath requesting a tourism update during the COVID crisis. COVID-19 will cost 8 million people working in the U.S. travel industry their jobs by the end of this month. The hotel industry alone has lost 4 million jobs, or 70% of the lodging industry's workforce, translating that into U.S. dollars. We will see $520 billion decline in direct travel spending in 2020. This is more than nine times the impact of 9/11 on travel sector revenue. Last week, Smith Travel Research reported U.S. hotel occupancy was 21%, including an 83.6% decline in RevPAR, revenue per available room, a key industry metric. These are the lowest numbers ever recorded by STR in their 30-year company history. In Springfield, the CBP has documented 215 conventions and meetings and 524 group tour cancellations, representing over 80,000 fewer visitors and 30,000 lost room nights in March, April, and May. Economic decline for the same period is estimated at $18.2 million. The numbers are especially high since the Bureau was expecting the busiest spring convention season on record. Please note, these are just the cancellations we know about, and does not include the economic erosion from the General Assembly understandably canceling nine spring session weeks in Springfield. March hotel occupancy for Springfield, provided by STR, was 34.6%, down from 60.7% in 2019. April and May are projected at 25% occupancy. For perspective, the city normally averages 60% occupancy for each month, March through October, with the slowest travel month always being December, averaging around 34% occupancy. No doubt, March, April, and May, and the early summer months, will see sharp local hotel tax shortfalls. In response, the CBP has suspended all international marketing travel for 2020, cut over $80,000 in FY '21 domestic advertising, and rescheduled the start of our premier summer travel program, History Comes Alive, from June 1st to July 4th. Travel experts agree regional drive markets and sports tourism will be the first to recover from this pandemic. Springfield is a regional travel destination with at least six major drive markets uniquely positioning us for a post-COVID leisure travel rebound. Our city's affordability, our geographic location, our world-class historic sites, our walkability and open spaces align with current traveler sentiment. A late summer travel rebound could save the city's tourism year. The CBP must continue digital marketing efforts in key markets with a new when-travel-resumes messaging. Keeping Springfield top of mind when travel gets to green light will result in millions of tourism dollars once again being spent in our community. The value of tourism industry in Springfield has never been so evident, and it will lead the recovery and comeback of our great city. And I think Alderwoman DeSanto can attest that when you turn off your marketing, I know she's seen this at the state level, and certainly at other areas during tough times, when you turn off your market, it costs you 10 times as much. And we need to be smart in our marketing efforts, but we cannot turn them off, and we need to move forward, and we need to be on the side that if there is a travel rebound, and believe me, I have benchmarks, May 15th is the benchmark, July 1st, June 15th. The beauty with digital marketing advertising is we can turn it on and off and move it around as we see fit. So in order to take advantage of a possible travel rebound, if we don't see it, then we turn it off. We have, if our historic sites do not open, if our restaurants do not open, we need to take a different approach. We need those key items to be available for our travelers, and if they're not, then absolutely, we need to shut it down, and we need to look towards 2021. We're doing that on the convention side, but we do not want to give up on leisure travel this year. That's all I have, thank you very much. Any question?
Question, Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Scott, can you tell me, you didn't give us the estimated losses that we're going to have this year, do you have that number?
The hotel tax losses?
Yes.
I do believe, from the estimation, using the STR numbers, and we, of course, we haven't got the actual receipts in, but calculating from the numbers that have been provided in March, and understand, I will not receive April numbers until around May 18th, but using March, I believe in March, we're going to lose about $250,000 in local hotel tax revenue. In April and May, if we do indeed only run 25% as projected, we could lose upwards of another $250,000 each month, and the summer will just depend on if we can open up and we have any kind of summer travel.
Scott, one more question, do you, have you been working with the Hotel People Association to develop a plan to, if we get the opportunity to reopen, to be able to open the hotels up in a safe manner? Have you been working on that?
Absolutely, we're in communication with the Springfield Hotel Lodging Association, and we're, our marketing team is working on a reassurance plan. We will need to reassure the traveler, the leisure traveler, that Springfield is safe, and the measures that we're taking, and that will be part of our marketing strategy once we see that travel will reopen again. And again, I think one of the keys is our historic sites. Our historic sites must open for us to be viable and compete in any kind of a late summer travel boom.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Alderman Redpath, or anyone else on the council? Director Doll, thank you for that information, it's grim.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any citizens request to address the committee this evening?
We have one person signed up, Mary Francis.
Mary Francis, are you in the chamber or on the phone?
She would be in a chatroom.
Okay. Is she in the chatroom? Going once? Going twice?
She is calling in right now, hold on. Tom Chi is getting, bringing her into the meeting.
We'll give her a few more. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chi's texting me right now, and he's not received anything just yet. It's your call, Chairman.
Well, you had indicated that she was calling in.
Yeah, he emailed her, and she said that she was calling in, but nothing has transpired. He has not gotten a phone call.
Okay. Since we're in extraordinary times, let's give her a little bit more time, and anybody else have anything for the good of the ore while we're waiting?
She's in now, Chairman.
Okay, on that note, Mary Francis?
Hi, can you, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead with your five minutes.
Hi, it's not going to take five minutes, but this question is for Mayor Langfeller about Pillsbury. Mayor, I'd like to know if you would be willing to establish a Pillsbury Mills Plant Advisory Council in the near future?
He'll have to get back with you.
Is the mayor at his seat?
He's not.
Okay, Mary Francis, we will pass that question along and ask that he get back with you. Anything else?
Is he there?
Evidently not.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, or Chair?
Manahanhour.
I would just say at this point, I'm not in support of another advisory committee. The Pillsbury Group, they already have a group. The Pillsbury Group, they already have a group. I don't, I don't see a reason to have a duplicate group, and I, for one, will be a no vote on, on establishing that committee.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything, anyone else for the good of the order? We'll ask that question of the mayor. If the clerk, you could pass that question along to the mayor, that would be very helpful.
Will do.
Okay. Any need for an executive session this evening?
No, sir.
No. Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Motion by Alderman Hanhour, seconded by Alderman Redpath to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We're adjourned. Everybody have a nice evening and stay healthy.
Thank you.
We have to, it's law.